I'd like to call this Planning Commission meeting to order. All members are present but for the mayor today. We have established quorum. I do need to administer an oath for anyone that plans on speaking at today's Planning Commission meeting. I simply say I do after I administer it. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth to this commission?
I have.
Thank you. First off, we have the disposition of the meeting minutes for our last meeting. It's about a month ago. It is attached to the back of your agenda if you had not had a moment to review them before today's meeting.
My only comment is relating to the communications and this is 27 Meadow Lane. I don't know that this has been resolved. It was based on my understanding that they had put it up to be at this meeting and then it pulled in and requested to be on the first one in April, April 4th.
Okay.
And again, I don't know that we have an answer yet on the appropriate venue for review of this request.
Yeah. Well, it seems like, is that where we still kind of left it? Because there's the comment in there, the commission discussed who the applicant should be and appropriate venue of view. And we put what the BZAs feelings is on it, but I guess we never really surmised what our feelings were on it.
And I would say that the zoning board may have turned down hearing it first off, but if it gets to be lot coverage, you know, I'd argue strongly for sending it back for lot coverage variance. If we get to that point, which I don't think we will, but if we did. Because this would certainly be a step beyond what we allow in the code. But that's just for future reference.
Right. Right. Well, I mean, I guess the idea is we don't want to have someone come in and then find out that we're just going to surmise and say this isn't the right board for that.
Well, it's my contention, and it has been all along, that since it's a PUD, that again, that a planned unit development means it's an established footprint, it's an established presentation of a footprint, and this is changing the footprint. And since therefore it's changing the PUD, which to me would have to go through the process of Planning Commission and then City Council. So, changing the footprint is the question here because they're really not doing that. They're going out and up. So, I'm calling a change in the cubic content of the structure, which obviously is not going to meet well control because the original plan did not meet well control.
Nancy?
I would argue with his last comment, with John Paskey's last comment, but I would like to suggest that given the number of deed restrictions that accompany the formation of this pod, I think that we need to move in the direction of clarifying exactly what people who buy into a pod with deed restrictions are protected from. Because that seems to be the crux of this. Can we really trick, if that's the word, can we really alter a deed restricted item? And that's the question.
It's also, it's clear that the PUD changes to PUD have to be brought by the applicant of that, which would be Wentworth and not his owner there. So, I think if--
No, that's incorrect. Not based on the deed restriction. Wentworth does not have to design. He just has to sign off on the changes.
I thought we read it last time and it said the opposite. Perhaps you can, when we hear it, you could bring us a copy?
You'll have an entire packet at that time. I'll even try to get it to you sooner. It's rather thick right now. So, if I know for a fact that it's going on the April agenda, then I will bring the entire packet to everyone at the next meeting two weeks from now. So, you'll have two weeks to review it prior to the case.
Okay. Well, I'd like to ask, thank you Paula. Paula prompted me. I would like to make sure that now that everything is in a more established pattern, that we would ask the law director what the relationship is between non-regulatory land use controls, which are deed restrictions, and our powers.
Right. Well, I'd like to receive an answer to that before we bring it up as a case.
It's a very critical item for many things that are coming up in the future. And I guess that would mean that we could, well, I won't say what I mean, because what I would think, but we're looking at some cases it may have, it may have applicability to with respect to rezoning.
Okay. Is that understood? Okay. Any other corrections, comments about the minutes?
Could you write that letter actually for us, you know, that you would ask under the circumstances? And it's okay, you know, John Paskey can do what he wants, but I also think that he needs to know that we are waiting until we hear from him. PDQ.
Yes, in order to provide guidance so that they know whether or not they're coming before us in April, whether or not we have that power. So, other than that, I'd move to approve the minutes.
One second. Nancy's second motion. All those bevered?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. There's no further discussion about last meeting's minutes? We have no cases on our agenda today. We do have a number of communications. First off, we have an ad. We're going to have Al Lang from Greenleaf Landscape introduce a project that's going to be coming forward here in the near future as a case. John, or Al, if either of you'd like to provide a summary of that project, then go ahead.
Yes, I may. Greenleaf Landscapes recently purchased the property at 340 Columbus Road. Many of you might know that. Well, actually, I don't even know if it's Columbus Road. I think it's a Theater Lane address that where the old putt-putt driving range used to be at the end of Columbus Road, or Theater Lane. That location, he's wishing to put in his landscaping business, where he will be adding some canopies for landscaping and obviously the stocking and supply of some trees and bushes, et cetera. So, from that, I can let Al take it and describe a little bit as to what he's going to be doing.
Buffy, just, I don't believe we have any microphones at the table there. So, if you'd go to the podium, please, so we could pick you up. Thank you.
And I do have drawings. I'll just pass this around while he's speaking here.
Good afternoon, Al Lang. The owner of Greenleaf Landscapes. We've been in business in Marietta for 35 years and have done multiple projects in this market. And after purchasing this property, what we'd like to do is take the existing building there, make it into a small garden center. We'll add three greenhouses to it, but they will not have sides on them. They'll be just canopy shopping in the dry. And on this lot, we'll do storage of bulk mulches, mushroom compost, stones, and that sort of thing that we use in our landscape business. It'll also be for sale retail. And then we'll have a storage of plants and trees and that sort of thing. So, I want to answer any questions.
I may add, this will be a Title 41 that will be on the agenda two weeks from now. So, you will be getting the full packet. Today's just an introduction to the project.
Is the entire property within the city limits down there?
No, this parcel is split. There's two different parcels. The northernmost one is outside the city limits, but at this time, I don't believe Mr. Lang is planning on doing anything on that property. Is that correct?
That's correct.
When will the staff review be conducted?
He submitted the drawings this morning, so I got everything here. So, we'll be going through the review process in the next two weeks. We'll get the sign out there and go through the proper channels that we would, so. So, I do know that Mr. Lang has been in touch with Water and Sewer quite a bit, and he's been working with them already about what to do there as far as his irrigation for his landscaping, et cetera.
In my understanding, is there is a proposal for a well on this property?
In the future, possibly.
Oh.
And as of right now, he does have plans according to Water and Sewer of irrigating with city water, within the irrigation meter provided.
I would like to request that it not be on our agenda for a month, just to give us time to review the city's comments rather than at that meeting. Because we do have, it's 15 days, the city has to review the items within 15 days of getting submitted, and then we have to review it within 15 days of once all the administrative reviews are complete.
Would I be able to talk to that?
I mean, we could still have it, but just not as a case. I mean, we still have it as communication at the next meeting. I just would like to allow more time than just seeing the co-review at that meeting and then making the recommendation there.
Can I address that?
Yes, you go ahead, Al.
Please. Obviously, you know, your system, wherever it works, the days are fine. Timing will be pretty critical here as far as opener operation. Because in the garden center business, it's Memorial Day, it's over with. So, if I can't get inventory, and it is an existing building, if I can't get inventory, we'll probably have to wait a year.
We could see about expediting the staff review so that that information could be sent out in--
I've pretty much done mine. I know Paul's been out to the site and met with him in regards to the floodway. He's met numerous times with engineering and public works. I doubt very seriously if police and fire will have a lot of comments. I don't think this will be that difficult to have the reviews back very quickly.
I guess that, I don't know how long, if we just got the plans this morning, I can understand the urgency, but on the other hand, I'd like to make sure, since it is within probably the wellhead protection area or close to it--
It is not.
Well, it's close enough that I would like to see what you might be doing, especially where you have gravel.
Sure.
I mean, the gravel, to me, is something that I would like to be sure that is okay if that's where you're storing trees and you're going to be fertilizing them and everything else.
We actually do not fertilize. We--
Oh, that's wonderful.
We don't grow any. And I understand that. First thing that come up back in December before we go out to property, our first question is, are you going to fertilize and what chemicals are you using? We move inventory in and out, so we will not, we should not be fertilizing. Maybe some hanging baskets, that sort of thing.
In that entire area?
Yeah. Now, those will be in the greenhouse part of it. In the back will be container plants and trees.
Okay. So, in the gravel service area, what is that? Is that for trucks to come in and out?
That's for trucks to turn around and actually dump into that bulk--
Bulk bins?
Yes.
Where do the trucks come from? Can we trust them to not be leaking stuff?
Yeah, I don't think we're going to put anything in there past this.
No, talking about the truck, the vehicles that you're bringing in and that kind of stuff.
Okay. I actually submitted what those bulk bins would be in them, so you could examine.
I see more of ethylene glycol, motor oil, gasoline, that kind of stuff that comes from vehicles.
Again, it's really not in the wellhead protection.
It's close enough for government work in my--
Yeah. In our units, our units that we run, we have two full-time mechanics to keep our equipment up to snuff all the time.
I was looking for any answers.
Oh, I understand. And I'm trying to give you one, so--
Oh, that's good.
So, we don't tolerate leaks. And the reason we don't tolerate it, because next week I might be on your driveway with my truck. So, we don't tolerate hydraulic leaks. We can't.
Okay.
So, that sort of thing.
If you find one, you're going to stop us here.
Yeah, I mean, I guess as so long as we received the administrative review, you know, a week prior to that meeting, I think we would have sufficient amount of time to review.
I will say that staff's been aware of this. It's been discussed at staff meeting for about a month or so.
Yeah, yes. Longer than that. Longer than that, probably, pretty much.
But now that we've got the actual plans and can review that, that we should be able to go.
Are there any other questions from your feeling or just ask about this project? I think you've got it. Next item on the agenda is in communications. We have a further discussion, the Far East Side rezoning request. It is, I think, the second portion of your packet there, beginning with the minutes of the regular meeting from November 16th. This rezoning request is in the Far East Side neighborhood. Mainly concerns the area that is zoned currently R2 and extending the R1 zone into a lot of that area. Runs again from Utah to the west and pretty much Townsend to the east.
Is that in the--
Yeah, it's sort of in the middle of that section. There's a map. The big sort of impetus for making these changes was there was concern about the development in the R2 zone allows duplexes to be built. It seemed like the citizens would prefer that the neighborhood remain mostly a single-family residential neighborhood. That's what the majority of the houses are in that neighborhood as well as in that area that is currently zoned R2. How they had proposed it was that the areas that already had a duplex on the premises or that already had a business on the premises would remain in R2 or be 3. John Paskey brought to our attention that there are a few, what I would call vacant lots, where there isn't a house on it, or it's a rental maybe now as well, which I guess would not be considered a vacant, owned by developers who typically do duplexes or--
Well, actually, the ones that I was looking at were owned by common property owners that own the tension that their business could continue into that area if they need be someday.
Right. I don't think, your map, I think was a larger scale map. I don't think that's been included here.
No. The one I did basically took in the common ownership of the East State Street properties that were already B3 and included that common ownership into the B3. And then I did a study as to where all the duplexes, or rentals, I should say, are located within the R2. And so, I established a line that would incorporate most of those and leaving that area as R2. And then the rest remaining part of it being reduced down to R1. I don't think that map is included in here right now. But that was the one that I proposed based on ownership as we stand today.
Yeah, there were also, we discovered, well, discussion we had in the past on this, that there were a number of deed restricted lots near the Utah and Strathmore area that were deed restricted to remain residential. So, I believe that even includes the lots that are adjacent East State Street. And in the request by the citizens group that brought this forward, those were to remain R1, well, I'm sorry, be made R1, not remain. I think it's, there's one that, a map put together by the planner that shows the proposed changes as well as the existing changes. Let's see if I can pull those two out so you can--
Thank you.
Yeah, here's the existing one.
Yeah.
Existing one, looks like this.
We all have a copy of that. It's this that we don't have, this exhibit.
I think everyone should have a copy of that one.
I don't think it's included in our packet today.
Yeah, it's the last page of my packet. And then, again, this is the proposed one.
That's what the citizens' proposal--
Yeah. Kind of have two versions of it.
So, it's also reducing the business zone was the other proposal.
Why do we have nothing?
Which, again, I have to state, I have a family member who has interest in a property in the Far East Side. And I've also always been confused as to why the business zone goes so far up into what is predominantly a residential area.
Right. When I looked, I put together a minor one as well that looked at just making the lots that front, East State Street, B3, plus one lot further to the, I guess it'd be further to the north as well. That does conflict with current zoning in there. There are a number of B3s that, or businesses that are actually established that go even further back than that, namely, some of the car dealerships over around Eden, is that correct?
There's a number of them all through there.
Yeah.
That would go back farther than, the business would go into the R2, so to speak.
But they'd be grandfathered in a zoning change?
They would, until they tried to renovate or do whatever. And that was the question that a couple of the business owners brought up at the town hall meeting, is what happens if they want to remodel, destroy, rebuild? Would they be allowed to do so?
Well, you know the non-conformities rules, right?
Right now, they'd be in compliance. So, they're afraid that they're losing their property rights if they wanted to renovate down the road, that they would lose that.
In other words, we never change the zoning code because somebody might want to do something different in the future?
I hear you.
I don't think so.
Yeah, that was mine.
One thing that I remember that was a problem, and we, it was when we were widening East State Street. There are so many entrances on and off of East State Street that, and there was a proposal, an active one, which of course, somebody dodged the bullet back then, to close off every other street in the manner of High Street by OSU is the one that comes to mind. And in the absence of that, it's a very narrow block that is connected by lots and lots of street openings. So, from an efficiency point of view, I do appreciate what the citizens did in terms of reducing potentially the amount of daily traffic. My heart goes out to them too, if you're a residential area, if you'd like to have it more residential.
Yeah, that one that you're looking at right now, Nancy, with the block, that's the one where I proposed--
With no transition.
Right.
I like that one a lot.
But again, it's deed restricted at the Utah, Strathmore area.
Your proposal was to eliminate R2 in its entirety. And as we've talked, there are tiny little pockets. But then we've also talked and heard about the affordability factor in terms of duplexes.
Well, you know, when you look at the map that Mr. Paskey made, it's pretty much a status quo map, isn't it?
Oh, no, his map's not in here.
Okay.
Yeah, the map that--
This is the map, is status quo.
That is the existing zone.
Okay. And so, there aren't that many B2s or R2s actually implemented up that street, are there?
No.
A few.
Yeah, actually implemented, there are but a handful. I think there's a dozen of them.
I think there was, yeah, anywhere from 12 to 17 for some reason. 17, for some reason, sticks in my mind. But that might have been all of them all the way up to Jacobs, and I did not include all of them in.
And that's why, again, in this proposed one, Nancy, is it's pretty much they, you know, contingently put them together. So, there are no R2s or duplexes that are even in this area. So, they have been pretty much sort of, I guess you would consider transitional space between these businesses--
Which was probably the initial, 1969, when they did it. That was probably what they had in mind.
So, generally, I'm supportive of reducing the B3 zone and--
Is that mine?
Yeah.
Well, let's start there.
Yes.
See if we can get some sort of--
Well, generally, I'm in agreement with what they proposed. I mean, if there is, you know, it sounds like there is an agreement that we should have some R2 remain. There already are duplexes in this area. And the citizens group that brought this forward seemed to agree that there should be, is still a space for duplexes within their neighborhood. So, I mean, to me, it doesn't seem like it's something very far against what we would want to see as the changes that we would recommend to City Council to, you know, further discuss and have public hearings on.
I'd be willing to proceed with scheduling a public hearing.
Me too.
And it would be indeed what they, this is--
Yeah, I think so. I don't think it's, I mean, it really isn't far off. I mean, I think we could kind of sort of nitpick individual lots, but then, I don't know. I mean, I think we would be at it for a long time. So, I think it's important to get the, to put this one out there as what it's going to be, or what we would recommend. Have a public hearing, and then we can see if that sort of sticks by having, I don't know if this is something we can put out, a mailing or a distribution of, or is it just a, we put this--
I bet they're watching.
What was that?
I bet they're watching. I bet they know.
Yeah.
Well, it could go on our website, right? And then, John, for a public hearing, would you be notifying all the affected property owners on a--
Public hearings are optional at the planning level. Mandatory at council. If you look at your documents, your packet, if the Planning Commission chooses to have a public hearing, it must abide by the public hearing process that City Council takes.
Okay.
Which would mean public notice, by at least one publication, a paper of general circulation. Said notice shall be published at least 30 days before the date of the hearing. Publish notice shall set forth the time and the place of the hearing. If the proposed amendment intends to rezone 10 or fewer parcels as listed on the tax duplicate, then you have to do, you can do notification by mail, or you have to, at least 20 days prior to the public hearing.
This would affect greater than 10 parcels?
Yeah. So, then there would be, okay.
And you're going to put up a sign, I assume, right? Although people may hate them.
Somewhere, somewhere.
Multiple signs, maybe.
Multiple signs, yeah.
Well, we, I don't know that we've devised that sign yet.
No, we haven't.
But it's not a bad practice. People really do notice that.
We could take our one we're using for Title 41, just maybe, I can look at it.
Zoning change proposal?
Proposed change to this neighborhood.
Take all those political signs, turn them around and make signs.
Well, we've got a bunch of them in our store right now, so.
Probably, if you can do it, about where the change is, along each block. I know that's a lot to ask, but you've got a lot of signs.
Pretty much, I think, maybe everywhere, every street going up and down, State to Jacobs, is really affected here because there's a lot of R2 properties that be changed to R1s. And then there's business owners that are going to be reduced in some of their properties, so.
So, we want to hear from them all.
Yes.
All right. So, it sounds like the earliest we'd be able to have a public hearing would probably be about a month and a half out to get public notice and the mailings distributed.
That's something we could do. I mean, there's not a ton of addresses there that maybe we can find out every address in that quadrant from Utah over to Townsend, from Jacobs to State, and send a letter to every one of them.
Still have a 30-day notice.
Still, yeah. Yeah. I mean, that's a lot, but--
Okay. So, put us April 18th for a public hearing for--
So, that means we need to-- Is that enough time?
The Planning Commission needs to be to know exactly which parcels are going to be rezoned prior to sending out public notice of zone change.
Well, I think that's, we're going to just stick with what the citizens has proposed as the rezone.
Well, I think at that point, first of all, we need to maybe define that and draw it a little better for the next meeting. Then you can approve the way this has been presented, and then we go public with it. So, April 18th might be a session too soon.
You're referring to this one?
Yeah.
Yeah, we probably would still need to double-check parcel ID numbers and make sure that we don't have things that are out continuous and contiguous.
Right.
Any of those issues, just in case. So, that may set you back to the first meeting in May.
That's fine. Was that something, how long would that take to put together? I mean, was that something that your office would put together or--
We can work on it together.
And present at our next meeting?
Ideally, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Lot on the table right now, but do you think we need to move forward? We can deal with this for a long time now, so.
Right. It'd be nice to take some things off the table, so. All right, so tentatively, the May 1st, is that right? Meeting, but we'll, again, further discuss that at our next meeting, how we're sitting.
Be May 2nd if we--
Or May 2nd, okay. All right.
All right.
Any other comments, RJ, Nancy?
No, thank you.
All right. Move forward to our next, our item on the communications. This is the zones, ground floor interpretations. I provided a sort of proposed changes for the business zones that would, the goal of this was, last, I think it was probably three meetings ago, I kind of presented a more lengthy one that sort of tried, attempted to list each principal permitted use. I felt like the agreement was-- I felt like the agreement was amongst the commission members that it was too much, we want to have some interpretation allowed. So what this revision is, is more trying to stick with the currently how the business zones are set up, but more clearly defining what those principal uses are and limitations to those uses. To try to make a delineation between accessory uses and principal uses a little more succinctly, let's say. To specify that dwelling use must be above other use and not above first story, as well as that, to make it clear that parking is required accessory use in B zones.
Do you feel that we need all this other additional language, other than what you put in, like in B2, B1? It seems to me that's where we got hung up, not B.
Well, this also attempted to fix some errors. For example, under B2 Business District, it currently lists the other uses as a principal permitted use. But if the BZA has to review it, it would have to be a conditionally permitted use because the BZA would have to approve it. So it tried to adjust for those sort of errors in where items were placed as well. But, no, I mean, I think you're right. I mean, the key, the key item is in there is that, you know, for example, in B2, principal permitted use and development limitations would be residential, dwelling units only when located above other permitted principal use within district to which this subsection applies. And it does list, I mean, I have taken out General Business. It seemed to be a bone of contention, last one, where we don't really have a clear definition in General Business, and to be honest, I couldn't find a clear one that's been used by other zoning codes that I've searched for. So I sort of removed it altogether. And just to start with Convenience Business, where there are definitions provided, and I've provided that as well, Retail or Service Establishment. So I guess, I mean, I'm open to--
I like what you're way of going with B2D, but I do know that the planner is working on a historical designation proposal to bring forward to us and then to council. So I don't know if he's had an opportunity to look at this to see if that language will be--
I haven't had a chance.
I haven't--
I guess, yeah, I mean, that would be a key one, the residential. The other one that I would want to be considered is, under B3, General Business Zone, one of the, the first provision under that would be, I'm taking out loading and unloading operations as well as parking, because I feel like that's pretty well handled by our loading and offloading title, as well as the parking one and the schedule. So it would be read, "All businesses, services, or processing shall be conducted wholly within a completely enclosed building, except for the sale, automobile, fuel, lubricants, and fluids at service stations. The outdoor display or storage of vehicles for sale or rental by lot owner. The outdoor display or storage of materials and equipment, and aspects of the use specified in paragraphs B9, 10, and 11." 9, 10, and 11 are the miscellaneous trends, businesses, contractor yards, related establishments, as well as agricultural. So, again, trying to push this away, the idea that parking is a principal permitted use. Businesses, we should treat it only as a required accessory. The only zone that I see parking as permitted as a principal use would that, or would remain, is the R3. Everyone should be aware that parking is--
What about a parking garage?
R3 would be, yeah.
Defining that, maybe that, I'm just saying, maybe that gets defined if it's a standalone structure like the city has across the street from City Hall. Not saying that anyone's proposing to do that, but--
Well, it'd be, I think it'd still be, you know, an accessory use to whatever else is being developed. Now, if it's just solely a parking garage, no, this would forbade that.
Do what?
If it were just solely a parking garage that was going to be developed on a lot, it wouldn't be permitted in a business zone if these changes were made.
But it would in a residential zone?
Well, I mean, currently it is. I'm not saying, yeah. Currently on the R3, it's parking areas listed as a principal permitted use, not as an accessory.
That's a lot, a parking lot, right?
Yeah. Could be enclosed, could be surface, yeah.
Yeah, we have some of them.
I mean, that can be changed as well. Right now, I was just trying to look at business zones.
It would be a stretch to imagine putting some, well, it might. I take that back. I've been not watching as much as I should. I've seen lots of stretches.
The other ones, the other changes are more sort of, just try to add clarity to the arrangement and order of the business zones, but. I would also suggest that drive-through windows currently are permitted in B2D. If you go under, because basically, it's whatever, let me see.
You know, that's fairly recent, and I can give you some background on it. I think it had to do with operation and this being a transitional zone. If you go back and look at it, it's probably been made within the last five years.
Okay.
I'm not saying I totally agree with it, but it was one of those things that came out of, probably a permutation of B2D.
My suggestion was to move that to a conditionally permitted use.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
On a case-by-case basis, as opposed to--
I'm having trouble with that. I don't know what, probably the things that would be cited in that area are so valuable that a drive-through would not necessarily--
Yeah, I mean, it seems like the only places you have drive-throughs are in the sort of alleyways or--
B3s.
Where there's a lot of--
Right, B3s, yes, but B2D, I can't, there's probably the alleyway at the, where the, one of the fast food restaurants used to be that maybe could support the, you know, drive-through uptown.
Is Domino's on a B2? That has a drive-through--
I thought that's B3, switched to B3 once you get to that.
I think it's B3, I think it is.
The other item provided in the packet is from Steve Pearson, now director of code at Nelsonville, in actions that they took for preserving the historic public square. I'm not sure that would completely clarify it for us.
I see these are the changes they made, okay.
Well, they did put in commercial use only is permitted. Again, we're back to the definition of commercial area.
Right, that's where I was trying to-- Yeah, B2, again, how I define parking was under permitted accessory uses, parking. Enclosed or surface areas required by the principal permitted use, subject to additional provisions of 2308 and off-street parking requirements, table D. The key point was to differentiate it from a principal permitted use. Another one besides the residential changes in the B2 one is that it also lists currently, and I kept that section, was automotive services and service stations. And again, remember, the B2D applies to, or I'm sorry, the B2 applies in the B2D and B3 zones. It seemed like automotive services seemed kind of out of place in the B2D, so I don't know. I know there is currently a gas station there in operation, and again, this is not non-conforming, you know, it's a--
B3 as well.
Was that, exactly, and the B3 as well, I just don't know how it fits in the B2D as something we would, it seems to kind of go counterintuitive with the sort of--
It somewhat looks like it was put in because somebody had a business there, honestly.
I, well, correct me, but I know there was at the end of, where were Bronies at? That was not a, and at the talk at the time, wasn't it?
B3 up there.
I know it was B3, but there was talk of B2D, so that's probably how that got done.
Well, it's the gas station. I think the gas station's actually B3 now, I think of it.
Rick, the BP is.
Everything worth of state.
So it's really just B, yeah, I would almost say, I mean, it can stay in B2, but I think that one, you almost, it's sort of excluded in the B2D.
I guess what it's been twisted around.
I would be my suggestion to add that exclusion to B2D.
It would have been in the B2D if we were successful in implementation.
Okay.
Maybe it would be successful if you didn't do this, I'm not sure.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, right.
Again, it could also be a conditionally permitted use as well, again, on a case-by-case.
You had previously provided other information, so now this is the new proposal that's live and on--
Yeah, I would, I would do away with all that. I think Shushar did include it in this packet, but I think it's, this is--
I'm going to draw a line.
Thank you. This is approach that everyone preferred, and again, it can be further reduced as well.
Is there anybody, I apologize, I'm a little bit lost on the entire discussion. Are we all operating from the same document that's being provided this morning?
Yeah.
Which is actually Nicholas's proposed modifications.
But then there was an email from Nicholas afterwards saying he was going to print out disregard--
Yeah, and I talked with Sharn, she made sure she got the right one, so we had it, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, thank you for seeking that clarification.
Am I correct that everything in red that's not crossed out is an addition? Everything that's crossed out is a subtraction, and everything in black?
Is the remains.
Okay.
Yeah, that's correct. I wanted to make sure everyone saw the change.
So when I'm looking at page six of thirteen with B2D, are we, is this all completely brand-new, B2D? Are we striking out everything in red?
Yeah, exactly. The only thing that B2D has currently is that it's same as specified in B2, except for schedule, both controls, Table A, and that it adds the A entertainment, principal permitted use.
And this is the one I'd like the planner to be able to spend some time with here, maybe in the next two weeks, to look at as he's drafting his historical preservation.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my thumb was, I found it kind of ironic that B2D is this sort of zone we're holding in this higher standard, but yet, we just treat it the same as the B2 plus add another--
You're asking for consistency. Why is that a mistake?
Can you just, under A, number three, can you just explain them?
Yeah.
So marketplace and not regulations should be the primary force that drives the mix of land uses in the B2D. There's really not a diverse mix of land uses in our B2D. It's essentially old, hundred-year-old, twentieth-century commercial buildings with zero setbacks. I mean, with office and retail on the first floor, and apartments above, and some of them retail, or retail and offices above, with the exception of a few parking lots.
Right.
I mean, those are basically our land uses there, by my estimation, so.
Well, I mean, I think that, and it could be word of better.
What driving forces, or what other market driving forces could we expect, and how would we deal with other market driving forces without regulating them?
Right, well, I mean, I think it's just being open to sort of innovations, because this is an area that we want to remain, want to remain vital, you know, for a long time to come. That if there are sort of, you know, if it's loft space or something that, you know, may have seemed like something we would never have done, you know, years past, that we need to be open to it now. I mean, I, thinking of, you know, properties that, again, like, you know, the war wars or something that's kind of remained vacant, you know, what else can be done to that space that might be not just, that you would typically just see from the zoning?
Well, maybe that should go under conditional, and it should say the marketplace and not regulations may be the primary force.
I'm totally uncomfortable with this sentence.
Yeah, it can be, I'm not--
Because, you know, we've already had problems of interpretation, and boy, is that pretty broad.
Right.
It's the same, land goes to its highest investor.
Exactly, well, I will have a developer arguing in front of us that the marketplace is driving--
The zoning code is nothing but regulation.
Yeah.
So this suggests that, I think maybe just that sentence needs to be--
Yeah. I think it could strike that sense, and you still have the intent of that purpose. I don't think it--
The whole sentence, the marketplace, not regulation, should be the primary focus?
I think so. I mean, that's exactly--
Are you going to cry if we do that, Nicholas?
No, absolutely, absolutely not. I don't.
Just want to make sure.
I don't, have no ownership. I mean, I want this to be something that the total commission wants to, so.
Plus, we're going to have this historic preservation thing that's going to come in, and--
Right, and that's where that development regulation should promote the continued use of older structures fits in as well.
Actually, I'll confess that when I looked at this, I went looking for a definition of the marketplace, and come to find out, it's a big philosophical principle.
It was your Frank Taker--
I know, I was thinking, the marketplace. Isn't it one of those on State Street?
And if I may, one that I'd like us to address in here, too, is the outdoor uses. If we're going to go to this extent, that the infamous playgrounds and McDonald's to the beer gardens, all the way through, outdoor patios, and maybe clarify where, distance requirements, something to think about, too, because that's kind of an open interpretation right now.
Where is it now? Where is it in this?
It's a can of worms, like everything else uptown. And I do believe it was done under a separate not zoning ordinance--
Yeah, I thought we had already looked at the outdoor.
It's a can of worms.
I mean, I think, you know, when you're reviewing this, and I don't expect any sort of motions today, I'd like the mayor to chime in as well. You know, I think, it's sort of been pointed out, again, by Paula, as well as other members, that I think the key one in here is in that B2, how we define residential, as well as in the B2, how we define parking as an accessory use. I think it is important that all drive-through windows should be conditionally permitted uses, whether they're at a bank, a, you know, carryout, a fast food restaurant, you know. If you look at, for example, the Stimson Avenue has a number of banks with drive-throughs in it that, right now, there's no regulations on them, whereas right now, there is regulations in that same neighborhood that restaurants can't have drive-throughs. So I guess we need to determine what, is it an issue of the drive-through or is it an issue of the use? I would, I think it, I'd feel more comfortable with all drive-throughs are just conditionally permitted uses that can be reviewed.
In the all zones, or?
It starts in the, I think I have, well, it's not permitted in the B1 zone, and that's, so it's starting in the B2.
Is it permissible in the B3?
Yeah.
It would be.
Well, I mean, again, still as a conditionally permitted--
As conditional, okay.
I would just take it out. Drive-throughs for a B2D, I don't see any reason to--
Oh, yeah, B2D, that's what--
I'd encourage that in the B2D, even as a conditional use. It's such a small zone. We do always focus on, you know, that it is walkable, and it's pedestrian-friendly, and it is so high demand from people coming and going to and from campus and residential neighborhoods and stuff.
Yeah, I think it gets to the point, though, then, once we get to the B, once you start, I guess, making the B2 and B2D a lot more unique, they start to, not be able to use that as what defines the B3 either.
Right, the only reason I ask, because B2, you got it as a conditionally permitted use, as a D1, and then a B2D, I agree with Paul, we eliminated from there, but in the B3, under number three, eating and drinking establishments, if drive-ins are permissible, it's saying it right there.
Right.
So which way, so are you saying, but yet, our code says it refers back to B2, so there's a conflict there.
Right, exactly. So it would be, that'd be something, yeah, so in that case, I would recommend, in B3, if we still want to make them conditional, and it's sort of the last page--
You're right, a few years back, I know there was something there. This, we had, it was before I was here, but I know there was, that this was proposed, and we can go back and look, but the word drive-through-- and we can go back and look, but the word "drive-through" and how it was established and that was recently put into the code.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, could we, before we even move B2D, I'm a little concerned, and this is just my suspicious nature, but it seems to me that one through five under purposes, although very lofty and certainly wonderful and acceptable to me, are they actionable? For example, number five, the streetscape and its public amenity should be, and that's a strong word, so attractive and friendly, and who's gonna measure that? It sets downtown apart from the surrounding environment, creating and maintaining, really good use of language, boy, I tell you, is a responsibility, should be upheld by the public sector's provision of infrastructure and the private sector developmental projects. And, you know, that's a really good idea, but is it actionable, do you think?
Right, well.
Because we've had partnerships before, in which the public and the private, and then the public ended up paying the private part. A million dollars on that block of North Court Street, actually. I just, you know, that's the thing I find worrying, because zoning is very turgid and not flowery. You did a really nice job of writing that up, but I'm a little concerned about it.
Well, we have a current streetscape plan that had been implemented, and I think that would still hold as, that's the plan that's in place that needs to be maintained.
Okay, the one that comes out of the guys from Bowling Green, or the one before that?
I think, well, I don't know if I've seen that one, maybe it must be one before that I'm thinking of. The one that's actually been, where, you know, all the way down Court Street, it was the extra sidewalk was added.
Oh, that, okay.
And then, I guess if a different streetscape plan would come in, or if there really is one that was.
I don't think it was.
Yes. So I guess if there is a plan in place that you can sort of enforce, then yes. Now, again, I don't know how you determine whether it's the public sector's responsibility or the private sector's responsibility to maintain, I don't know if that's clear. I mean, the sidewalk.
Yeah, council would probably decide that since they spend money.
So we have a lot of conversations already with Athens Uptown Business Association regarding, hey, city, why aren't you sweeping our sidewalks? We're already sweeping the streets, you know, there are, so this, I agree with Nancy in some, the manner of which we should probably look at that in language. It doesn't say shall, it does say should, but I could see that being an avenue for additional burdens to be placed on the city in terms of the maintenance of the streetscape.
I like the idea of it being in like a paragraph, where it's clear that this is the intention, with some modification. That would be as far as I would go. I don't like it separate out there dangling, so it could be, hey, let's start cleaning up the vomit on the street.
Right. Yeah, I mean, it could be something where we almost take out that section and add it to the purpose, you know, where we could say to reinforce the downtown's uniqueness and character standards and streetscape herein.
And it's.
And that way, it's not, it's not holding as much sort of, as a requirement, but more like, again, a ideal.
Right.
Do you feel though, that once the preservation is set up, historic preservation, it might take in a lot of these? I mean.
It may, but, I mean, I don't want to rush Paul either, he's been working on this fairly diligently, and, but I do think that he'll want to look at this section, so.
And it, you know, we don't have to have any of the sort of, you know, I'm okay without putting principles in this, as long as I think we, again, in the purpose, set it apart from the B2, B3 zones. You know, it's a very important zone that we need to maintain.
And I think you do a good job of kind of outlining it, as long as we aren't liable.
Yeah, that's right. All right, well, I'd like to put a motion that we table further discussion on this until everyone's had more of an opportunity to review and, you know, make their own corrections that they see, but I think this is the better direction to go than this sort of wholesale replacement of business zones that originally proposed, so hope I don't waste your time.
I agree. Thank you for modification.
Any other discussion, or I guess is there a second motion to table discussion?
Second.
All right, all is favored.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Any other communications on the agenda? All right, we have the reports from the city planner and director of development code enforcement, who'd like to go first?
I just have a few things. You know, infrastructure-wise, the connecting steps from Armory to Fort, the concrete has been poured, they're curing right now. The handrail has not been installed, I think that should be coming in the next few weeks as it's manufactured, so that'll be open and ready for the public very soon. A lot of people are already using it. The Public Works Department did apply to ODOT, a letter of inquiry or a letter of interest, letting them know that the city may be interested in applying for some grant fundings to establish some sort of a bike path connector from the bike path on the west side of town to Columbus Road. This would be on the opposite side of the Hocking River from central Athens. ODOT did recommend that this, they were interested in our draft proposal and recommended that we go through the next steps to provide them with more information to consider that for funding down the road. So, that's a goal that we've had with our bicycle and pedestrian master plan, was to find that connector from the bike path to Columbus Road, and so Public Works will be working on that. Arts Parks and Recreation, that'll have, Rich Campatelli and I are working with Anita James, she's on the faculty at Ohio University. We'll be working with a class starting next quarter, it's a graduate-level, PhD-level class that we'll be doing, surveying and stakeholder interviews and small-table discussions in relation to putting together an Arts Parks and Recreation Department Master Plan, which we hope to have done by the end of the early fall, so.
Okay, any questions?
I can add to Paul's though, too, the stairs at the West Elementary are being built as we speak right now, too. So to further that other one. I just have a few basically announcements, no BZA cases for this month, so we get a rest but this month of having any cases. Beginning of the year, I'd like to remind everybody, it's the carbon monoxide detectors required as of January 1st. We ask that you do not wait until our inspection, it's awful tough to do them all at one time, so we're asking landlords to, I mean, asking tenants to ask their landlords if they're not in yet to get them in, if they refuse to do so, or if they have concerns, to get ahold of our office, we will follow up and make sure they are in. We had an incident last week where these have proved to be beneficial. We had a situation on a house on Congress that was running 450 parts per million on the gas coming out of the hot water tank, so it proved to be very beneficial, and this is the reason why we enacted this rule, and it's working. I also like to remind everybody, the new sign ordinance is in effect, and we are really concentrating at this point on the four rent signs in the front yards, and that no matter what zone it is, those are not permissible, and we are having people get them out of there, but we see, we get them down, I see a few still popping up, so I just want to remind landlords and the public that the four rent signs in the yards are not allowed. Today, I have one of our code officers, Lance Allison, is at the law enforcement training workshop for environmental crime, that will kind of deal with training on illegal dump sites, scrapping of tires, illegal dumping of tires, and probably more for us around here, is the safety around, on our inspections around crystal meth labs, drug operations within the rental, so how to be safe and how to recognize them and be careful there. So, and that's being put on by the Keep America Beautiful program, which I can segue into that, that a few weeks ago, the city of Athens became part of a thirteen-county, wasn't it? Thirteen-county collaborative of Keeps Southeast Ohio Beautiful through Duane National Forest. I was named as one of the ten collaborative members on that board, and we will begin meeting Friday, March 23rd, to develop a plan over the next year as to how we proceed. So, that's what I have.
All right, any questions for Mr. Paskey, Mr. Lou? All right, thank you both for your contributions. Opportunities for our citizens to speak about items not covered on the agenda, anyone like to discuss any items today? We, again, we don't have any microphones at the table, so if you'd step up to the podium, appreciate it.
My name's Chuck Hammer, I'm the administrator at the Athens County Health Department. And I, I'm gonna talk a little bit about fluoride, and I know fluoride isn't in your bailiwick, so as a planning commission, but the reason I'm here is just recognizing the members of the commission as community leaders. There's been some discussion about fluoride in the city water supply, and I just wanted to provide you with some information, so I brought some packets that I'll just provide you with. Just because citizens are gonna come to you as people who are knowledgeable about the discussions and situations, and the Health Department would like you to be informed with accurate information about the topic. If you've followed the discussions at all, you know that the Health Department is supporting the continued fluoridation of the water as a public, good public health policy. We do recognize it as economical and safe, environmentally sound, and just good public health policy in our area. So, there've been a lot of discussions about people with concerns, and we've looked at, at least some of the concerns that have been presented to us pretty carefully, and found that those concerns are not based in scientific fact. So, anyway, that's all I have, other than giving you some packets of information here, and appreciate what you do.
If you would provide those to Sean, she can distribute them to the group, I do appreciate. Comments, any questions?
Well, I just wanted to, on what Chuck is saying, that there is indeed, do they call it initiative, that has been filed, that they're obtaining signatures now for this to be on the ballot in the fall, for essentially telling the city then they can have to cease fluoridating the water. So it's kind of reaching a higher level, and that's why the Health Department is doing the public outreach, so that we're aware.
The key reason for fluoride in the water is for healthy teeth and gums, is that correct?
Correct.
Does it have an effect if it's, the water's used and heated or cooked? I mean, is the fluoride still, you know, effective?
It's still there, yeah, it's a mineral.
Right.
So, other than precipitating it out, or removing it through a filter.
Okay.
And not every filter will remove it, but like a reverse osmosis would remove it. So, it's a naturally occurring mineral that the city adjusts to an optimal level for dental health. So it won't be removed by cooking it.
Right, okay. All right, any other questions? Thank you for.
Sure, thank you.
Any, again, any other comments or?
Just for the record, I think you all know me, but I'm Ron Luce, I'm with the Athens County Historical Society Museum, and I live at 15 West Hills Drive. I'm sorry to say, with the sound system and the noise back there, I couldn't hear a great deal of what you folks were saying up front here. I would really love to get a copy of that document, the draft, I realize it's just a draft, but if that's possible, I would like that. I'm coming before you today to ask you to consider making some recommendations to City Council for code, related specifically to the incident that we've all been dealing with for the last couple of months. I couldn't hear exactly what you said, but I think personally that the code was fairly clear in terms of the differences between residential business and industrial, and I thought that the information was clear enough about what constitutes a B2 and a B3. However, I think there are some things that I would like you to look at and offer as recommendations to the City Council. One of the things that was frustrating to me during this whole thing was the feeling that I was constantly being told I had no recourse but to sue the city. I think that's not where we want to be, it's certainly not where I want it to be, and I think that there is language in the code that could have avoided that kind of issue, and I would like you to think about adding this into the language you recommend to the zoning board, or, I'm sorry, to the City Council. I believe, but I'm not a lawyer, I believe that technically you have 30 days after you make a decision to finalize that, and to change your mind if necessary. I would like to see something in the code that says, if presented with obvious evidence to the contrary of a decision that was made, that you would reconsider it. And I don't know how that would be done in terms of the language, but I'm asking you to at least consider that. The other thing, I think the language of the code, particularly in 230502, is clear that when it comes to a non-conforming use, it has to be authorized by the Board of Zoning Appeals. To me, that seems very clear, but for some reason, this didn't seem to be perceived that way, perhaps that's simply because I don't understand the code as well as you do. But, it seems to me that when the, when the issue of the, of whether or not this was a conforming use came up, it was just assumed that the decision could be made here, and in my opinion, the code says clearly it had to be made by the Board of Zoning Appeals. So I think that's worth looking at in the code and saying, either we're going to change that, and we will have the permission to do that, or we have to pass these things on to the zoning board before we go forward with the planning commission decision. When, it seemed to me, again, as a non-expert in reading the code, that when the issue came up of whether or not this was an acceptable reading of the code, and the law director's office said it wasn't, that that should have promoted a discussion about anything being in conflict with the city code, and I think, again, should have forced a discussion with the zoning board. If you look at 2306-1, it says very clearly, all departments, officials, and public employees of the city vested with a duty or authority to issue permits or licenses shall conform to the provisions of the city Athens City Code. And I'm sure some of you, other people, would make the argument that you did, and that may be that you did, but it seemed to me that there was enough question that that should have gone to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and I think there should be a clarification of that. The, there's other language that I want you to think about and offer to the City Council. And I'm trying to find the, okay. If you look at 2306-1C, talks about violations and remedies. In case any building is or is proposed to be located, erected, constructed, reconstructed, enlarged, changes, that's a grammatical error, maintained or used, or any land is or is proposed to be used in violation of the zoning code or any amendment of supplemental thereto, the City Council, the City Law Director, the zoning administrator, or any adjacent or neighboring property owner may, in addition to other remedies provided by law, institute appropriate actions or proceedings to prevent such unlawful location, erection, construction, reconstruction, alteration, conversion, maintenance, or use to restrain, correct, or abate such violation, et cetera, et cetera. Look at here yourselves. That says to me, again, a non-expert, it says to me that Mr. Paskey could have said, word violation of code, we're going to appeal this. Mr. Lang could have said, Lisa Eliason could have said, right here on the day that you voted against their decision, said, then I will appeal it to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and she would have been completely within her rights. I took this to City Council, asked City Council to condemn the action. City Council, in my opinion, could have said, this is an incorrect reading, and we are taking it to the Board of Zoning Appeals. None of the powers that had that ability. None of the powers that had that ability did it. Again, I'm not blaming anybody, I'm past all that, but my idea, my concern is that I think there's language in the code that should have been consulted and could have been used effectively, instead of repeatedly saying to the public, to me in particular, sue us. That's the only voice you've got. I think there were people in positions of power and authority who could have said, now wait a minute, guys, let's think about this, and that didn't happen. Again, I just would like you to look at it in the code and see if it says what I think it says, and if it does, then if it's not clear to everybody who has to interpret the code, then either make that part of the educational process of people work on this, or if it's not clear, write the code in such a way that it is clear. I made the case over and over again that the, when we get into the powers of the Board of Zoning Appeals, I believe that they have the power to overturn decisions that they find to be in violation of code. However, the, what the argument came down to was the word "appellant," who is an appellant? And that is being interpreted at this point as only the person, in this case, Mr. Wasserman, would have had the right to appeal had he been turned down, but nobody else had the right to appeal. I think that's a wrong in terms of what city government should be about. I think that there were lots of people in this community who felt that it was wrong, a wrong decision, and, or misinterpretation, perhaps it's a better way of saying it. I think that anybody who has a legitimate case should be able to be heard without having to go to court, sue the city, put us all through that, spend their own money, et cetera. What I'm saying is, I think you could make a much more open government and create an opportunity for things to be worked out before they become a major battle by allowing some appeals processes along the way. I agree that once something goes through the Board of Zoning Appeals, that's the final decision, and the only way to change that is through the courts. But I think there were lots of places along the way for appeals, both in here and in other portions of our city government. So, number 230703C.
We don't have the code in front of us, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
We don't have the code in front of us.
Okay.
Could we get your notes, Mr. Loos?
I sent all of these prior, these were all sent to all of you prior to the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting on the weekend, I think of the 11th, it was the February 11th. And I would gladly resend them if you wish me to do so.
Well, just send them to Shaw and she'll distribute to us.
Since we're talking.
So, here's what I'm asking, and this is what I would be asking of city council, and I appreciate Mr. Patterson appearing here. I think it shows a great deal of interest, and I appreciate him taking the time to care about this. Our city codes, I think, have many conflicting areas in them, and I can see why that would create problems in trying to understand them, but I think, at least to my mind, the things that I've just pointed out are fairly clear, and I think that we could have avoided a lot of upset and upheaval in the city had we all been reading the same code, and, or somebody needs to teach me how to read code because they just seem so logical to me. That's really all I have to say. I would ask you to put forth in your proposals to the city council, a means by which average citizens can make appeals, reasonable appeals, to the entities that are deciding code. And if, I think it's bad business to push people from the get-go to say, well, you don't like what we decided, sue us. That's just not democracy to me. Okay, that's really all I have. And the last thing is, if there's anything that could ever be down, done with the sound system in here, sitting over there is almost impossible. It's garbled, I can't hear a thing, and then there was all the noise in the background, so maybe it's just because I'm getting old, but I, I really couldn't hear most of what was said here today.
Yeah, I'm not sure why we have all the seats like the furthest away you can get from the members here, but.
Yeah, particularly when you have three people in the audience.
Exactly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like, Mr. Loos, one of the key items, you don't need to respond to this, but one of the key places there was where it sort of listed.
I can't hear you.
That's amazing, wow. It seemed like one of the key areas was where it listed all the, the members of the administration. Again, if they saw no violation, that's probably why they didn't bring it up, but where it gets to the port where it starts to getting specific about the adjacent landowners, and if none of the adjacent landowners bring it up, it sort of, just sort of ends there, that the addition of having any citizen of the City of Athens, you really could get rid of all, everything, and just say, any citizen of Athens can bring this up, and it can be law director, service, well, maybe we do, and city officials.
They're also talking about dragging a process out, too, because a lot of businesses are working on time schedules, and as long as the city is offering reasonable opportunities for debate of an issue, you know, my question would be, you know, in your case, you would have been happy to drag this out for two or three years, you know? At what point do you cut off and define what is no longer reasonable discussion?
Well, there could be a time limit. I would, I would think you'd have time limitations.
He said 30 days.
Yeah, 30 days is all.
Well, I don't think that's what.
Well, I certainly wasn't, my intention was never to drag it out for two or three years.
No.
I would have liked the decision much quicker than that.
All right, well, we think, any comments? We still have opportunity for citizens to speak, any other items? Okay. Announcements on other business, our next meeting is scheduled for March 21st, same time, same place. Any other announcements? Any town hall meetings?
April.
All right.
We'll have the information for you at that time. The last email I got had a different date, so that's why I would need to check that, so.
I thought it was April 3rd.
I thought the most, the recent email I received from Milt was April 18th, so that's why I'm, it's kind of.
Further discussion.
We'll let you know.
Do you have something?
At this time, though, Won't You Be My Neighbor: Discussion on Housing for the Disadvantaged.
Okay. Any other announcements? All right, if that's the case, our meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, everyone.